Hello, my name is Rose Riley and I'm a member of the League of Women Voters of Washtenaw County. Welcome to our online candidate forum for the November 8th general election. The League is a nonpartisan, nonprofit organization that promotes voter education and participation. And we host candidate forums to help voters make informed choices. Now, let's hear from the candidates.
Good evening. My name is Deidre Shawn and I will moderate this forum tonight. It is my honor to introduce the two candidates who are running in the November general election for Washtenaw County Board of Commissioners, District 3. And they are Democrat Shannon Beaman and Republican Robert Geiskie. Thank you candidates so much for participating in this forum. So, we are now ready for your opening statements. Ms. Beaman, would you start with yours, please?
Thank you, and thank you so much for this opportunity. I can't say how grateful I am for the League of Women Voters and all that you do within our community. So, I have served as county commissioner for District 3 since the 2018 election. I live, work, and raise my young family in Washtenaw County. But even as a child attending Chelsea Schools, I knew that this corner of the county was so special. From our bustling downtowns to our rolling hills and beautiful farmland, there's no place else like it on earth. After earning my MBA, I returned home and I'm an avid supporter of all of the distinct elements in District 3. Throughout my two-year tenure as commissioner, I have faced a $10 million budget deficit, a global pandemic, I have faced an increase in racial unrest with a cry for justice reform and more. There is no crisis where I will waver in my support for the residents of District 3.
Thank you, Ms. Beaman. And now, Mr. Geiskie. Your opening statement.
Thank you, and I'm very pleased to be here. Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Robert Geiskie. I live in Sharon Township. I grew up, raised in a small farming community of Corona, Michigan, and I learned the value of hard work, faith, family bond, pure sense of community. And I went to engineering school at Lake Spire State University, which was also a very family-oriented, small, actually the smallest university in the state. These experiences continue to shape who I am to this day. My career, senior engineer, senior security engineer, IT facility manager. I've mentored interns of engineering and other forms of employment, and I was also the EHS Coordinator, Health and Safety during COVID, all the while working full-time. And then moving to Sharon in 91, my call to public service was, it just emerged. I became parish council member, Boy Scout leader, Washtenaw County Republican, technology advisor to the Chelsea High School, the co-founder of the Chelsea High School First Robotics Team, and a co-founder of an environmental group, Stewards of Sharon. And our efforts helped stop sprawl of a 700-unit mobile home park.
Thank you, Mr. Geiskie.
Then I was appointed planning commissioner.
Okay, so, Mr. Geiskie, you get the first question. And this first question has to do with use of federal funds. Washtenaw County will receive more than $70 million in federal American Rescue Plan funds. In July, the University of Michigan's Poverty Solution Center evaluated Washtenaw County's use of these funds. The U of M report recommended that the county prioritize adequate one-time investments in a limited number of initiatives, rather than spreading the funding too thinly among multiple programs. The report also recommended a focus on achieving specific measurable goals. Is the county spending these ARPA funds as recommended by the U of M report?
My take on the way the money has been spent, I noticed that one of the lowest priorities were roads. And quite frankly, in District 3, dirt roads do matter. I think that some of the money needs to be allocated to the outlying townships. There's also disparage between what I would say, the central location of services within Ann Arbor. So, everyone from the outlying township has to come to Ann Arbor. I'd like to see some of that money help the public service of the outlying townships. For example, homeowner's insurance is extremely important and very expensive if you're not very close to a fire department. So, it'd be nice to possibly take some of that money and beef up the infrastructure of some of the outlying townships, as well as health could be a very useful, I guess, addition. Instead of having everything centralized, the township halls could serve as basic health services and possibly satellite EMS or fire department stations. So, I think some of the unused facilities that we have in outlying townships could be reused, repurposed for some things to benefit the local communities versus having to travel into Ann Arbor as well. So, I disagree with some of the priorities that the current board, actually, most of the priorities that the current board has decided to spend that money on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Geiskie. And now, Ms. Beaman, it's your turn to answer that question.
Thank you, and I'm gonna start with Go Blue. So, the way the dollars have been allocated, there are two different areas. There is an area where we can look at infrastructure, things that are physical, and there are areas that are services. And the one area that I agreed in this report from the University of Michigan is making sure that we have longevity of these services. These dollars end. They're not coming back. This is a once-in-a-lifetime investment. And so, if we are to launch programs with this funding, we have to find the sustainability. We have to find the funds to continue those programs. Now, when we're looking at infrastructure such as broadband, which is what I championed and allocated, $15 million of ARPA funds, as well as different grant funds and funds from the county, for the fiber we're currently running is going to last 70 years. The technology that's going in is actually better than what I have running to my home currently. And I live in an area with internet service. So, when we're looking at how to spend these dollars, I want to make sure that it's something that outlasts the funds. I want to make sure that it is really impacting countywide. Again, when we look at broadband, that was corner to corner. Everything from western to central to eastern Washtenaw townships lacked that type of infrastructure. We have addressed other issues such as childcare access, which was huge from the pandemic. We have addressed healthcare. We've created new mobile services to reach our townships, to take services out of Ann Arbor into the areas where they are desperately needed through these dollars. So, again, I do agree in part that we need to look at what is going to last when we use these dollars. But we also have to look at the impact and we have to look at the restrictions around these funds.
Thank you, Ms. Beaman. All right, the second question for this evening is about safe drinking water. Two chemical spills, PFAs and Chrome 6, have endangered drinking water in the county. What steps should the Board of Commissioners take to ensure safe drinking water for county residents? And Ms. Beaman, you go first, please.
Thank you. I appreciate this question as this is something that has touched my district in many different ways, from both the spills to lead lines and pipes. One of the first things that we need as the Board of Commissioners is to have those relationships from the federal, state, and local level. One of my first phone calls as county commissioner was a PFAS spill. I was on the phone with EPA, the State of Michigan Eagle, and our local elected officials within the Celine area. This is when county services matter the most. The state and the federal government had no homes near this spill whatsoever. Our local health department found 10 wells right near this spill, residential wells, and we were able to contact and connect and work right on the ground with these residents. So, relationships are huge with this. Also, we need to go after these polluters. We need to go after these corporations. When we see these spills happening again and again, it is not a coincidence. It is not a mistake. It is repeated abuse, and it needs to stop. Our children need fresh drinking water. Our seniors need fresh drinking water. We need to know that the water we have in our farmlands and our rivers is safe for our children. So, that is another place where, working with things like the Gelman situation on the Board of Commissioners, you know, we took a real stance and a real look, and that's why we went after the EPA designation for that site.
Thank you, Ms. Beaman. And now, Mr. Geiskie, your response, please.
Yeah, the water, it's been under siege, I guess, for a long time. Being in Sharon Township, there were a number of bottling companies that wanted to come in and put a stop to that. But there's also, you know, gravel pits and other things that really hasn't gotten the attention that it should have. So, I think as far as, you know, our water is obviously great. I mean, we have the Huron River watershed and the River Raisin watershed. And if we work together with all the communities in addition to those federal dollars and make sure that they're obviously put to work in the right place, then we'll continue to have a wonderful place to live here. But without a cohesive work plan to make sure that everybody's on the same page, it's not, I mean, take the Flint Water Crisis, for example. You know, not everybody was on the same page. So, the EPA and as far as our state government definitely needs to draft a uniform plan to ensure that we won't have any Flint Water crises. I mean, we have the plume right now that's migrating around from Gelman that's still there. And I know it's being monitored, but without testing to make sure that some of these, there are new farms that are coming out that, quite honestly, I'm not sure of some of these medical marijuana farms and what's going on with their water. They use a huge amount of water. Is that being adequately addressed? I'm not sure. So, any resident that lives in our county should have access to clean water. And if they are in question of any of that, they should get free testing. So, maybe some of that money can be allocated to test everybody's water in the county.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Geiskie. Okay, question number three. The topic is election fairness. And we'll start with you, Mr. Geiskie. Do you believe that Washtenaw County operates free and fair elections? What additional steps, if any, should be taken to secure election processes and ensure that public confidence is present in all elections?
I do. I honestly think that we have a good system in place. Until the rolls were messed with, the voter rolls seem to have been reset, and I don't know why. Key examples are coming from a number of people, some clerks. And from personal experience, I've had two voter registration cards come to my house for people that no longer live there. They had been purged from the rolls years before. So, there definitely needs to be some surgical scrutiny on, first of all, the state records compared to what and it's not hard, you know, it's not hard to determine this. You have a fixed amount of residents. We recently had a national census, and it seems that the people that, quite frankly, the people that had left those rolls and actually moved out of state were put back in the voter rolls. So, I think the system is fair. I just don't know if the record-keeping at the state level that provided all of this information kind of complicated matters for all the clerks. So, and plus, you know, to be quite honest, I think everybody has a right to vote and should do so legally. And when you have an abundance of all these organizations sending applications for absentee ballots, I mean, I've received four or five. Why? It just complicates the whole matter. It needs to go back to just being one person, one vote. If you need an absentee ballot, you request it. So, yes, I think the system is fair. I just don't agree with how it's been maybe mismanaged.
Thank you, Mr. Geiskie. And Ms. Beaman, same question.
Thank you. I said it in the 2020 election, and I say it today. I stand behind all of my clerks. They are amazing humans. I have worked with every single one of them. And there was no tomfoolery as it were with the election. What is scary and something that I have worked extremely hard to address is the issue, again, of broadband. Our rural township clerks have to wheel the voting machine over to the closest window to try and get a satellite signal to send to Washtenaw County their votes. That is not okay. It's a slow process. It's a horrible process. In fact, my clerk in Sharon Township, when they had the vote on a broadband millage, their internet went out. And so, she called the Washtenaw clerk and said, "I want the irony of this noted. The internet is out when we are trying to vote on a broadband millage." So, for me, that is one of the scariest things and what I am most excited about as we roll out this fiber is that they will have this high-speed connection. There will be no fear of can we get this in in time? You know, is everyone waiting for us? All of these different issues that happen when we do not have access to secure and reliable internet, whether it's snowing or raining, satellites fail when we have that nice hard fiber connection. We know it's going through. We know it's safe, and we know it's nothing that we need to worry about. So, that has been my biggest fear with the elections is just the pain that my clerks go through in these townships that just do not have the adequate access.
Thank you, Ms. Beaman. And now, for question number four, and that you will begin this time, Ms. Beaman. The question has to do with the after-effects of COVID-19. The COVID pandemic disproportionately affected Washtenaw County's least privileged citizens, especially those living in zip codes 48197 and 48198. Are there additional steps the county should take to address the effects of COVID on these residents?
Thank you for the question. It is something that we've been addressing at the board, is how do we look at county-wide issues? But how do we also look at these disparities and inequities that we know exist within our communities? We have been working as the board, going out to 48197, 48198, and discussing the issues that we see in those areas that the people face every single day. The same way I brought my commissioners out to Sylvan to see the broadband issue. We're going out to the Ypsilanti area and seeing these issues that people are facing firsthand. There is more that we can do, and there are things that we are doing right now. We have a grants opportunity. Through the ARPA dollars, we are allocating funds to specific organizations that can supply that boots-on-the-ground services that are desperately needed in those areas, whether it's surrounding education, food insecurities, healthcare, all of these different things. It is something that the board is addressing and is taking very seriously because we are not a healthy county when we're not all on the same page. And whether that's the southwest corner, the southeast corner, central Washtenaw, if we don't have the resources that we need, we're not going to thrive as a community. So, going back and investing in 48197, 48198 is something that's very important to me. And even, again, I'm beating this drum, but when we looked at broadband, that was something that they didn't have in Ypsilanti Township. It's right between Ypsilanti and Ann Arbor, and you would think they have internet access, and they don't. And when we had COVID and those children went online, they couldn't learn. The people couldn't go to work. All of these different things are happening on the eastern side of the county, as well as the western side of the county.
Thank you, Ms. Beaman. And now, Mr. Geiskie, your response, please.
Thanks for the opportunity to address the COVID. As the Health and Safety Coordinator for a number of years, working in Ann Arbor and looking at the facts and the science behind it, I think the majority of problems were in the treatment or the lack of quality treatment. There are other ways of helping people that were ignored. And that being said, as far as working from home, my DSL worked just fine. I connected all over the planet in what I was doing. Now, Sharon Township, for example, we did get broadband, and we did get it because being former planning commissioner, treasurer, trustee, I was instrumental in getting the hardware that tapped into a brand-new tower less than a mile from the township. Regardless of what some people have said, I proved we had faster-than-broadband right at the township during a meeting where we had broadband by definition is 25 megabits down and three up. So, it's not super fast, but we had 40 and 10 during a meeting. So, as far as people working from home and their children, we gave them a hotspot so they could come up and use that hotspot from the comfort of their car. But it was better than nothing. And as far as the COVID response and the way of communicating, I think people still had a great opportunity to get together because we did have some opportunities to provide internet. Now, when you go after all the money and everything that was put forth for COVID measures, I just don't think it was allocated properly, and I think there's a lot of abuse in the way that money was wasted.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Geiskie. Thank you very much. Okay, we're on to our last question. That last question has to do with county worker pay. Recently, some Washtenaw County employees went on strike demanding higher wages. A 2020 compensation study for the county found that county workers' pay lagged 7% to 12% behind the market wages. What should be done by the Board of Commissioners to address the issue, and how would you pay for it? Mr. Geiskie, could we hear from you?
I think that there's a lot of money going possibly in the wrong direction. And I don't understand why, let's just take one in particular for the county budget for jails, just a little graphic here, that we're the highest percentage of general fund in the state. And yet, we have a shortage, a dramatic shortage by comparison of guards and officers at our jail. And recently, there was a very serious incident that occurred. So, I'd like to see a deep-dive surgical analysis of where the money's going and see if there's any redundancies that we can eliminate so that we can pay the people who are doing the work and try to attract more people to the core services such as public safety and guards and whatnot, because it's obvious that there's money there. But where did it go? We're the highest tax county in the state of Michigan, number 71 in the nation. And we're higher, our median tax in this county is higher than Ventura, California. That says a lot. About $800 average higher than Oakland County. So, there's obviously enough money here. It just needs to get allocated to the workers. And when I see huge loaders with a brush hog coming out on my dirt road to brush hog, that is a serious waste of resources, not to mention the carbon footprint that this thing leaves. And there's so many areas like that, and the cost to the residents just keeps going up. There doesn't seem to be a tax that this county won't pass, quite honestly. So, yeah, the outlying townships are shaking their heads. What's going on?
Thank you, Mr. Geiskie. And Ms. Beaman?
Thank you. A few clarifying points. Our rates in Washtenaw County actually go to the school districts. That's our highest rate when you look at our county rate and what goes to the townships. It's actually on par, if not lower, than some of the counties within the state of Michigan, excuse me. So, I just wanted to kind of clarify that for a moment. But for me, our workers are us. At Washtenaw County, we provide services. That's it. We don't make widgets or gadgets. The Washtenaw County Board of Commissioners does not oversee the roads. We do not produce roads. We don't have a physical product. We have people. And when we don't pay our people, we don't have the best people. And we are scraping in certain areas. In some places, our hands are tied. For example, when we're looking at CMH, Community Mental Health, there are Medicaid guidelines that actually cap what we can pay, what we can reimburse. And we have tried all kinds of creative ways to increase that rate because $14, $15 an hour, that's barely scraping by. That's not a life, and that's someone providing direct care to a person who really needs that service. So, for me, yes, I loved that we did this study to see where we were falling nationally, locally, for rates. We need to attract nurses to our community mental health, or, excuse me, our public health. And we can't compete with even senior facilities, let alone the University of Michigan and St. Joseph's Mercy IHA. We need to be able to pay these amazing humans for the work that they are doing. Some of it needs to come from Lansing. We need to advocate. Some of it needs to come from DC when we're looking at Medicaid and Medicare. We need to change these limitations to allow the people who do the work to get the pay.
Thank you, Ms. Beaman. And thanks to both of you for answering our questions. Now, it's time for you to give your closing statements. And Ms. Beaman will begin with you.
Thank you. I just want to thank you again for this opportunity to speak to all of the voters and those who are turning in and all of the work that the League of Women Voters does. The COVID-19 pandemic has highlighted many issues in Washtenaw, and I've been able to address them head-on with support of the Board of Commissioners, full support. While the nation may be divided, locally, we roll up our sleeves and we get work done. I've worked to support all of District 3 regardless of partisan politics. I work side-by-side with my Republican supervisors' boards to deliver the needed services and resources to our residents. From protecting farmland to ensuring our drinking water is safe, I work diligently to support the issues our cities, townships, and village face. At the end of the day, we all want the same thing. We want safe community. We want affordable resources, healthy families, fresh air, clean water, places to run and play. I work with our elected officials and community leaders to create a place where my children can grow and my parents can afford to retire. This quality of life is accomplished through partnerships, trust, and respect, things I have worked hard to build since taking office four years ago. This November, you have a choice. This November, you have a choice, the choice to work together for District Three. Together, we can ensure our community is safe, healthy, flourishing, and thriving. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beeman. And now, Mr. Geisky, your closing statement, please.
Thank you. I'd like to extend prayers to our friends down in Florida and anyone else that's going to be affected by this hurricane. It's such a tragedy. So that being said, I think we all need to take what we have and cherish it. You never know what can happen. We're pretty fortunate here in Michigan. But the biggest problem we have going on here, and we're all suffering, it's the economy. And quite frankly, my statement about the taxes being the highest in the state are well-founded. Their taxfoundation.org has some very good information on that. So just for comparison, four thousand five hundred and eighty-two Washtenaw, Ingham at twenty-nine sixty, Livingston twenty-eight twenty-nine, Kent twenty-six oh five, Wayne twenty-four eighty-seven, and Oakland thirty-seven hundred. So we need to end this trickle of poverty. I mean, with the cost of fuel, for example, especially diesel, you got dramatic price hikes in fuel, and that hurts our farmers the most. Plus, the compounding of all the additional costs from fertilizer and every thing that they've had to endure. All of them, and the vast majority of our goods and services are powered by diesel. And with that drastic increase, it's hurting everyone. So I'd like to see, again, a surgical review of the county and look at where we can reduce costs and possibly, you know, thank you. It was a pleasure.
Thank you, Mr. Geisky. And thank you to both of you for a very interesting and valuable forum. So we really appreciate that you were here this evening.
The League thanks the candidates and volunteers who participated in tonight's forum and community members who submitted questions. Please urge others to view our forums. Most importantly, please vote in the November eighth general elections, either by absentee ballot or in person.